Seven o'clock, we're gonna start the board of selectmen meeting Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty four. Agenda at seven P M in person and virtual at the town hall. I'd like to call this meeting for order and first we will. Chase our chairs and pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. The nation, on your god, indivisible, with liberty and justice. First, I'd like to ask that we keep our comments down to four or five minutes. And our number two on our agenda is to set a meeting date regarding the the Pajoli driveway. Is there any comments? Any public comments, any?
I just have my calendar ready, so.
As if anybody have a date they wanna start with?
Good, uh, after sometime after the last week of August. Please. We've got to get the Bible.
So. When did you say this both week after it's a time you said after the end of all?
It should be could be the last week of August or maybe.
So any objections to the? Number. Tent? Or we could.
On that beach.
Are you still looking? Not looking at August? I bet it's up to you.
Mister, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, August twenty seventh, we have an A P meeting and if that's the only thing on the agenda with the board, I consider to meet that dates.
August twenty seventh. So any objections to August twenty seventh?
I actually thought we had, and I'm not commenting on this, on the this, the content of this um, subject matter, but I I thought that we had already set an A P meeting for August twentieth with the retreat meeting after that.
Yeah, so the problem we've run into, uh, I think. Is it is if you look down the schedule, there's there's one on the thirteenth, a meeting on the thirteenth. And a meeting on the twenty seventh, and we did have one set for the twentieth, but now we're into. Four Tuesdays in a row. So if we can move that. A P. The twentieth to the twenty seventh, so you're right there, we've already consumed that.
So we can leave the retreat meeting on the twentieth and just move the A P to the.
It's a lot of meetings in a month, every Tuesday.
Will the A Ps have to be where the A Ps are because that coincides with.
Our payables department.
Accounts payable.
And payroll.
But it doesn't mean that there can't be something else along with the.
Yep, okay.
So we could move the retreat one to the sixth.
Isn't that Labor Day weekend?
That's today, today is the sixth, can't do that. Oh, no, she's got it at six o'clock on the. The twentieth, we were trying to move it, so. We can move it to the thirteenth.
Of September?
Of August.
Of August.
Which would be, which would be next week.
Yep. I will have, I still have to go through and clean up the work plan, but I'm swamped. So I prefer, I was planning to have it for the twentieth.
Well, I'm just trying to get rid of one.
Can we do the the driveways after the thirteenth and do the retreat after the?
Twenty seventh?
I would like to be here for the Pajoli.
And you won't be here next, correct?
And you won't be here for the twentieth as well, I take it?
Correct.
So it looks like.
So you're not here for the rest of August?
No, the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, yeah, twenty seventh.
You're here for the. Yes.
And the twenty seventh's work. For the Pajoli. And I guess we'll leave the retreat on the twentieth.
Well, Pam's not gonna be here.
Anybody get a pencil? I want.
I'll just I'll wait it on.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
All right.
This is when we decide.
Then we got an agreement going, okay. So did you say the twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh is fine.
Okay.
Thank you, seven o'clock?
It's okay with.
Six. Six o'clock.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure.
The A P meeting is at six and doesn't usually take long.
Okay, that's fine.
So we set it for. Uh, we did six o'clock, okay?
And what exactly is the meeting for?
Uh, for the board to deliver it.
Possibly make a decision.
Take.
No.
Okay, so the decision will be made on that.
That that right, yeah, that's why I want, it was important to get a date that both parties could be there.
And the board. Last time it was only the twenty seventh.
Well, any comment you have?
They closed the public hearing, so I would think no.
Correct. So it'll be immediately following. The six o'clock. Account payable.
On the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
Is the Pajoli.
Yeah.
So that's how we'll write the agenda, Mister Chairman, is immediately following.
Yeah.
The A P meeting.
Yeah.
From this the twenty seventh at six o'clock.
The A P meeting is the twenty seventh at the six o'clock, and the chairman is saying that we will write the agenda. For the special meeting on the Pajoli driveway matter, so it will immediately follow the close of the A P meeting. And the A P meetings are typically fairly short. Usually around fifteen minutes. And if we have some other business that we add to that meeting, it's still not, it's never more than twenty or thirty minutes.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Okay.
Do we still have the retreat meeting on the twentieth?
I guess so, yeah. Yeah. My preference would be to move it, but.
I will not be able to be there.
Uh, even if we move it to the thirteenth, you still won't be there, so.
I'm not. Looking at the calendar.
What time, under twentieth?
The six o'clock? Wow.
We can do September, folks want, but we did have. You know, action steps that are coming up that we need to touch.
I, we'll live it on the twentieth and we'll put a little bit more together, we'll make it for six o'clock, so that. Uh, we need some staff here, be available to us. Okay. I think that's it for that. You're gonna move on to number three, are you all set?
Yeah, we need a motion to that, or you just have to date.
I don't think you need a.
You don't, yeah.
Well, are still on meetings? Is there any reason we wouldn't? Do the A P right before planning and zoning so that we don't have two different?
That's a planning zoning, that's not our meeting.
I know, but couldn't we do the A P at seven?
On the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Uh, when we get down to this?
Okay.
This was Sunday, okay.
I was just trying to consolidate, see what I left me.
We can discuss that.
See, that's also a typo, right, the fourteenth is a Wednesday.
Tuesdays.
Oh, it's correct, yeah.
The fourteenth is Wednesday, yeah.
I can't.
See, if you have your calendar.
You can't.
Do the fourteen.
That's.
I don't, I don't think putting the A P up one day or until.
Yep, that's not a.
That's a good idea combined, you don't have to do two meetings.
Uh, so we're missing Pam and. Matter. We've missed two people. So twenty seventh.
Chairman, I think you've been working on this retreat for a long time, I I would prefer it if all board members were present.
Well, it's your return date. That you would be able to attend. Uh, can we go get to that after?
Sure.
When we get down there, we understood, we just wanted to. Uh, allow the Pajoli people to come to go.
And then there's no further comment on the the application.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we tried to set meeting date, yeah, all right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, so number three, is there any public comment? Other than. What's on, oh, would you like the, uh, the stand?
Oh, no. I don't even know, be quiet and unheard. She, I will, may come to the owl, we speak to the the bird in the middle.
The chair.
That's awkward, um, would you like a chair?
We're not chair, yeah.
Want to be brief.
First, we need to know who you are. We need to know who you are.
Elizabeth Bruegger, forty-four, Toomey Road, um. And I'm here to expect my support for the funding of the replacement American flags and flag kits along on parade route, that's on the agenda for this evening. Um, our town takes great pride in honoring our fallen military during Memorial Day Parade, and these flags are a part of that. Replacing the flags will ensure that they're always presented in their best condition, reflecting the respect and honor we hold for our country. And I urge you to allocate the necessary funds that have been requested for the flags, the flags on the poles that don't currently have them, and the flight kits. We fully acknowledge.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public comment, and we're gonna move on to number four. Ongoing business, and we'd like a report from our ad hoc committee on our tax issue.
I'll just join you at the end of the table up here.
You're definitely.
You're gonna scoot out when we're done.
Thank you, Ben.
I can't reach the ground, okay?
It won't over anymore.
Yours.
Thank you, sir. So we met last Thursday, we being myself and Amanda and Bob. And reviewed where we were to date with things. And what, you know, what was the approach to refund, you know, to return to folks the excess, you know, monies? And whether or not to hire a consultant, and we went over, yeah, I guess those are the main things that we went over, so, you know, waiting to set another meeting date based on, you know, the outcome from discussions tonight. So no changes on our recommendation, which, you know, we had talked about at our, you know, last meeting with the selectman. And please feel free to jump in, Amanda, you know, and Bob is, you know, we proceed. You know, as I talk, you know, color commentary is welcome. And basically, this, you know, what we wanna do is just return the excess funds, but, you know, find out for sure what the, you know, amount is of excess funds that we have to return. And then return to people proportional to their. Holdings in real estate and personal property, you know, that difference based on an effective, we're not gonna really change the actual mill rate, but we're going to set, you know, a what-if mill rate if we had had the correct grand list at the time. That we set the original mill rate, you know, we would figure out what that mill rate should be, and then based, you know, on people's property holdings, as I mentioned. And that new effective mill rate and the amount that was, that would be come up with something that we would return to each individual, you know, to individual tax holders. And we'd have like a five dollar minimum, you know, amount to be returned. Anything you wanted to add to that, Amanda or Bob?
Yeah, we, we, the process, we, we did it, we did suggest that. When the treasurer sends a letter out, that.
Yeah.
In part of our discussions and part of the board's discussion was that they. It, it reads in in a manner that it will be a credit towards your next year's taxes unless you wish to have a, a refund. And if you want a refund, you have to notify the treasurer and your, if you would check, that's, I think we agreed it, that would be our suggestion.
Cause it's simpler that way, reduces the amount of postage that's, you know, involved, and gives people an option should they wish to choose it. So that was the, you know, just a rehashing of that. And then we talked about how do we get to that real number, cause we felt that we do not have the expertise or the time to actually do that. And so we had considered, and I think we had mentioned it to the selecting as well, possibly hiring a consultant. You know, Mary, you know, Mary Huda, who we also interviewed last week at the meeting, and we asked her to come up with a proposal, and I have a copy of, I made some copies, I will hand out. She got back to me this morning, and I forwarded copies to. Amanda and to Bob, and.
I think there, I think everyone had a chance to get them.
I didn't know whether they did or not.
I don't, I don't think it's.
We absolutely sent it out, so.
I checked it pretty, I checked my email pretty late in the day, I didn't see.
It's the same thing, if you got it, it's the same thing that you're getting now. So it's just, you know, and basically what we asked you to do is take a look at, we gave her three objectives, asked her to, you know, face things so that we could, um. You know, figure out how to apportion our funding, so the first one is take a, get to what is that actual? What is that actual dollar amount of overage we are dealing with? That's the number one priority. Goal number two was to investigate and determine how this issue occurred. So we have greater confidence, as she states here, that this will, you know, not happen again in the future. And again, it's risk mitigation, you cannot prevent it, anything forever from happening, but we would like to put some, you know. Find out what it is and then reduce the likelihood. And then three was take a look at, you know, streamlining our processes, you know, for, um. How we work together, you know, between the assessor, the tax collector, and so forth, just to make sure that the process is sustainable, that there's some oversight and so forth. She did not give us a total amount that she thought it would cost, but she did quote us an hourly rate of two hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour. I cannot comment as to whether that's a good rate or not, but I did go online and I looked at what do assessors get paid for salaries? And there, I looked at about six or seven different sites, some of which were. Job hunting sites, some of which just collect the salaries, the hourly, effective hourly rate, if you annualize somebody, take somebody's salary divided by twenty eighty and get an hourly rate. It ranged from about. Thirty dollars an hour all the way up to seventy dollars an hour, if you, you know, just. Based on what assessors make in the state of Connecticut, and that's without regard to, are they part-time, are they full-time? You know, is it a big town, is it a small town, you know, whatever, do they have staff that they manage? So that was just, you know, so just giving you the range, and typically somebody who. Worked on their own would probably charge more than those rates, you know, typically, you know, fifty percent to a hundred percent more to cover their insurance, cause they're gonna wanna cover insurance for, you know, liability for anything that they do. And then they're going to, you know, have to pay taxes, and they need to have benefits and so forth. So again, I cannot comment, you know, whether this is a good rate or not. But I'm just putting it out there what I looked at, and you know, what I saw for, you know, what's assessors get paid.
Amanda.
I just wanted to chime in and say, you know, one of the concerns I had that wasn't mentioned on here is that. You know, she got permission from the town of South Windsor, but she said it would have to be, have to be outside of South Windsor business hours, and they have basically the same hours as us, where they have Friday afternoons off. And so that would mean that we would have to have our staff work outside of business, their normal business hours, I don't know how feasible that is, right, to work with her, um. And then upon seeing that hourly rate, I had many more concerns, you know, this is already costing our taxpayer dollars, taxpayers' dollars. Um, and so, you know, we have to be very cognizant of that, where, you know, because there are costs of correcting this issue, and we don't want to make them that much. Worse, I would also say that, I I don't know that that's how I would have worded goal three that she put on here, I think we specifically said. Identify policies, procedures, and suggestions for preventing this from happening in the future, not necessarily, I I think. While it would be great to streamline and have efficiency, that is not what we asked, and one is a lot more targeted and narrow with the scope than the other, I think, um.
So she actually covered it better, and like under objectives, you know, under objectives, the second one, process audit and process improvement plan, I think is more of what we wanted to your point.
Yeah.
Those two items, so if you replace goal three with what she has under objective. The second objective, I numbers one and two, I think that would cover it.
And we had asked her to. Estimate how many hours each of these goals and feet, or as we called them, phases would take, so that we could either ask her to do one, two, three, or none, right? Um, based on what this group decided we wanted to do, um, so. You know, a little disappointed in this document that we were provided today, and not sure that we can move forward without some more details.
I, I, I concur with that, that's why I think it'd be important, if you wanna go forward for. Our, the chair and perhaps the administrative officer, just to. Sit down with, with Mary and discuss this and and see if we can come to an equitable agreement. Um, you know, I, this is simply a starting point, but I think with, in in a week's, assuming. Jimmy, I've gone on vacation this week.
Wedding.
Sorry.
Wedding.
But, you know, people can make contact. If there's an agreement to be, to be had, I'm, I would think within a week's time, we can. Reach that point and decide to go forward. The other thing we talked, just to mention, when we, when we looked at this thing, if we broke it up into segments, how far do you wanna go with? A third party? In, in. In our, you know, as the committee in trying to resolve things and. Particularly on the end portion, and coming up with a policy. For our community to go forward with, and one of the things we've talked about, perhaps we could. We, the committee and and finance committee, or whatever, could probably come up with that, with a policy.
Yeah.
With some majesties that are having that, that person doing it, so.
I think we already have a general idea of what we want or what we need.
Exactly.
And we can figure that out, I think we also have two other questions, I think, Mather, you have one first?
Yeah, maybe I missed this, did, did we get an indication of how many hours she anticipates?
No.
Yeah. This has all been since.
Very quick.
Very quick, it only been a few days, so that's why it, it needs to be a conversation.
Yeah.
It's.
And also maybe we can see if there's anybody else we might consider, cause we have a couple other former assessors.
Exactly, because you knew, right? Yeah.
So I'm not intimately familiar with the way that assessor's offices were. Tax offices.
Join the club.
So C C M A is some sort of qualification that she has. Um, could you just remind me? By. She's more qualified than somebody we have on staff?
First of all, the person on staff, I think we need to have some oversight with the person who's responsible for this, because that person stated she never has checked anything for twelve years. And that alone is enough to make me wonder about, you know. Relying on that person, so that's one reason I, we don't think we wanna go with this existing person for more insight. And the other is. Bob and Hi and Amanda looked at the information, and we can slice it and dice it, but we don't know how the systems.
It's not your job.
Yeah, it's not our job.
But I'm just thinking, like you mentioned, looking up salaries and folks that do this stuff, and. I feel like maybe we have those people, but your answer satisfies that question unless there's other people on staff.
Right, and having a third party.
You guys thought about.
Yeah, having a third party who actually, and the other key element that works with the revaluation company. That has worked with them for years.
Do they have resources available for this sort of thing, like auditor, audit?
You're right, you know, the Fox. Yeah, so we want an outside source looking in there, so.
Okay.
Would, because. The thought is, I was, where, where did this initiate?
Yeah.
Was it us with them, another combination, and that, and that's a key factor to how we resolve this and how we go forward with it, and we. And like we said, we don't deal with. That company.
Yeah, yeah.
As intimately as any assessor, but or or one who's been in the business for twenty years.
All that makes sense, that, that, that sounds rational, so how do we source a couple other, um, opinions or folks? In other words.
I have some ideas.
Okay.
No, I mentioned a couple, I like Charlie Dana, for example, cause he was our former assessor, and again.
She's retired now, so.
Married her home.
Sort of retired.
So there's a number of people we might ask who, you know, have been assessors and have certifications and worked with the systems, whether it's those two people we mentioned, or there's some others, Jim said he had some ideas.
All my ideas.
Okay.
They had the same ideas.
So, you know.
It's like they may be more flexible with time.
They might be, and it's just also good to get more than one, one clock for anything, it's due diligence we'd wanna do, cause we talked about, I heard some discussion last week about, you know, the contract, some, you know, a contract with an individual that we need to beef up, and I just think we need to use the same diligence, you know, with this, with a sense of urgency, but not rushing into something blind, wouldn't. Cause we don't want to go and make this a mistake again, you know, we want a number that we feel. This group is satisfied with, that we can explain the process to our taxpayers, you know, in an easy way, and, you know. Move on with it, you know, with the, you know, assurance that to likelihood of it's happening again is, is minimal. Thank you, Gwen. I'm sorry.
One piece of, one question that I don't see that that this proposal addresses was that issue that you brought up the other day about. How you and Ross had both looked at. The spreadsheet that the assessor used, the spreadsheet that the tax collector used, and you were coming up with a pretty big discrepancy.
Yeah, that's the first part, so.
But that.
Making sure the assessments are accurate that are going into the van list.
Yeah.
Okay, but I, I thought you were, I thought you were working on coming up with, were you working on coming up with a grand list?
Yeah.
So I think that should be specified in the job description, that to me, this just talks about making sure that the assessments. Are accurate, but we wanna make sure that we have a grand list, that then we can base the new, the, the, the new.
Yeah.
The revised.
That's how we stated it.
We stated that they'll.
In that way.
Yeah, cause we said, we need, we said basically, we.
I think it's pretty important to, to specify the grand list and not just the assessment, because the grand list affects everybody.
Correct.
The, the assessments are affecting these five hundred and sixty something people.
Well, but, but our issue is to correct the grand list so we can properly do the assessment.
Particularly the. We asked her to come up with a grand list snapshot, specific snapshot in time that would be valid for the purpose of correcting this.
Right, that was another question we had, yeah.
Is there any other? Questions? Um, did, so. When, when you're. Thinking about bringing this in, would it be that she would just get a password to the computer, go in and start going at it? Or?
We haven't discussed.
Say. I, I'd like this report, that report, and you just put them in an.
We haven't discussed any details like that yet.
No.
Yeah, okay.
No, because really, the, there's things that have to be. Really investigated, and one of them is with the revaluation function, yeah, to, to track.
It's the problem.
Well, going back to, everyone got, everyone did receive in the mail after, when we did the revow.
Yeah.
With their new assessment audit. And that was a reval, revaluation company, so the revaluation company at the very beginning of this process in twenty-three had all the correct numbers. And we need to know how. That sets of numbers ended up with a set of numbers that we ended up with, that's, that's what we have to find out, and that's, and that's pretty significant as to what happened and what went wrong and where it went wrong.
So we've requested copies of the letters that went out with the new revalued assessments, we haven't gotten those yet, we requested copies of. The letters that went out, the tax bills and the revised tax bills, and we got those.
Got those.
And those are part of, you know, putting together the pictures, and then obviously there's. The list that Kara has generated, which she believes is the current, the, the corrected grand list, and basically. Someone would sit down with her and review that and look at all three of those pieces and maybe other stuff that we aren't aware of, to just establish that that is.
As correct, yes.
A correct grand list.
And, and then also that the differences that we see between the, you know, vision. And, you know, Q D S are legit, you know, they're expected, there's certain things because. There's certain things because apparently they do some updates in Q D S as a part of the normal course of business, because I think you found out from talking to Mary Terhome.
Yeah, and Kara's, Kara did send us explanations for each of those discrepancies. And my understanding, which I have not yet confirmed with Kara, is that they were basically snapshots of the, the grand list from different points in time, right? Before any revisions or adjustments or pro-rations that happen for the purposes of taxes. And so that's part of why Kara's numbers did not line up with Lori.
Yeah.
But it was not explained to us when we received the documentation.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so I think the next steps it sounds like would be to sit down with Mary Huda.
You see.
And go over these details of, you know, cost. And then also talk to these other parties to see if they would be interested by Charlie Dana and Mary Terhome, to see if they would be interested, because they may have some more flexibility than, you know, Mary Huda. I think the other challenge too with Mary Huda is not only that she worked the same hours as our town staff, but also that um, the assessor is only available two days, you know, of the week. So that's another challenge, but she's in the eve, available in the evenings here. So that would help with her, but it doesn't really help with the other folks. If you wanted to get two or three people together to walk through a flow or something.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, but that's something.
I think we've got a.
You all have to discuss.
They have a direction for the board.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so there was no, it was just a report. There's no actual report. Uh, the only thing I'm gonna add.
Yep.
Is, is I will try to get a list from Lori of the automobile tax base to see what uh, kind of value was shot out on some of the bigger mobile homes and stuff. I still think that could be a contentious issue. There's fifty million dollars worth of automobile taxes out there, right? Or the value.
From what perspective?
I think that's for another time.
Right, well, I just wanted to make that comment. That's all, that's all I'm saying. So, I mean, I'm not saying it's out of the mix. Uh, okay.
So then I guess we will go and meet with, see how we can meet with these individuals and get back to, you know, this group and see what we can get done. I understand.
Uh, so is it Jim I meeting with Mary and the, and I will meet with. Or? Oh, not, I don't know, not me. I don't want to be on it.
Okay.
If, I was wondering if the chair of the subcommittee.
If that's all right with you, because I have more flexibility with both of you. So if you want to set up, if we want to set up a time with Mary, I can, I can reach out to her and see what times work for her and then pass them on to you. I imagine it'd be outside of her work hours.
Yeah, yeah, for you, Jim. Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that they pull then for B, because they have a consensus of what, how to move forward. A second.
Any other discussion on tabling four B, which is to consider an act on recommendation, have a third party look at the tax issue? All in favor?
Alright, fine.
Alright, that's, yes, zero, no, motion passed. That's tabled. Uh, now we move on to four C.
And I will move on. So, enter. Hi, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, consider an act on using Founder's Day Fund to person, purchase additional flags. And four D is in our says, or C, oh, C, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the issue was brought to, to me by, uh, we had a discussion. Uh, she recognized the fact that we were missing flags, that there were flags that uh, and were no longer posted along the parade route. And so she questioned about the possibility of, um, how do we go about getting them replaced? Because it has been something that, and from this board member's point of view, something that's been very popular amongst the townspeople from the time we actually placed them. It was something that was brought up originally at the Bolton Three Hundred planning uh, to do it for um, the parade route. And then um, after deliberation by the board, we were, we moved forward. We were blessed to have the fire department step forward and manage it for us uh, and get them up by volunteer hours. So we're pleased, uh, I'm grateful for all the work that the fire department has done on that and their dedication to it. Uh, so when we, I, I then reached out to um, or Chief Dixon to ask about where he was, where he got the flags originally, how much the cost would be, thinking it was a few flags. And then we realized that they've sustained, because if you remember the big winds that we had last year in the spring, um, actually did quite a bit of damage to the flags, because they're not taken up and down, because of so many of them.
Yeah.
For each individual storm. Uh, and uh, I did make a phone call to, to other towns. Um, and yes, they do have a regular replacement that they do for their flags because of the same issues. Uh, I did not ask how much they charge. I did not ask where they get them from. But this is the company that Mr. Dick, Chief, Chief Dixon has worked with. And the good news at the end of it was that there was a twenty percent off. Also, the price would be um, the money that you see at the bottom of the page, and we would take twenty percent off. I recommend to the board that we lift that the Founder's Day Fund, because there is money in that fund. Uh, this is something that is community-wide, uh, which is one of the uh, stipulations of using money from the Founder's Day Fund. And we have a community event coming up on September twentieth for the dedication of the part of bench front uh, of the town hall at the veterans area uh, to Master Sergeant Michael Clark, who left us uh, two years ago, in a very untimely accident while he was on, on duty in Georgia. So, um, it would be, I think it would be a very fitting thing to do and a good place to take the funds from.
Should we make it two thousand for shipping and handling? They didn't show. It's seventeen seventy-two. I don't know if they get shipping and handling in there.
Nice question.
Yes.
So who puts up all the flag?
I put them up and take them down at the end. So, did you, was that a motion?
There is no motion on the table.
Okay.
It's just open to, to the discussion.
Okay, is there any?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to use the Founder's Day Fund to purchase additional flags.
And kits.
And kits.
And.
And kits.
Alright. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
How much is in the Founder's Day Fund right now?
I believe it's pro, it's practically seventy, it's seventy thousand, Jim?
Gee, it's significant. I, I don't, I, I thought it was, I thought it was around sixty, but it's certainly. Yeah, right. Yeah, right. So it, yeah, and we established, obviously, we established that fund prior to COVID. And uh, we had all kinds of things planned out. Obviously, we could never do it, we, even if we were to postpone it, we could do it. But I think it, the initial, initial purchase was out of there. So I think it's appropriate that this the maintenance of the flags come from that fund. It seems the appropriate way to do it. And quite frankly, I think is is appropriate to have those flags out there. And um, it's a signal of, of our, 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 our communities, I think, uh, sending a message that for those who serve, we still remember you. So. Any other? Yes.
I'll say that I, I certainly agree that it's, you know, important for us to have them up, uh, speaking to the fact that they are getting ruined and we have storms lately, we may want to, I, I, I personally don't see the need to have one on every single pole. I haven't noticed that they're missing. I think every other is perfectly sufficient. Um, I say that because we're having more and more storms, right? So they're going to be damaged more and more frequently. And it's going to be hard to keep up with it, right? And so just considering the sustainability of having one on every single pole for, for, you know, in perpetuity, right? Eventually the money will run out. We don't want to be replacing these, you know, over and over again. So just, you know, keeping in mind the sustainability of it and how do we do this in a way that's, you know, respectful and shows how much the town cares about people who have put their life on the line, but is also cognizant of, you know, sustainability challenges.
So I think we should complete the mission as stated, and leave them on every pole this year and then review that for next year when we have, when they take them down before they put them up, maybe.
Say we have two sets, right? When one goes out of commission, you've got some replacements in the, in the.
And it depends on where, I suppose, as well.
Yeah, true.
Uh, okay.
Motion on the table.
All in favor of the motion on the table? Aye, there's seven, yes. Zero, no. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Move forward, Bruce. Alright. Four D, consider an act on a date for ad hoc town hall committee meeting. And I was there.
Chairman, I don't believe that requires any.
Act.
Motion.
Yeah. Just, you know. We.
It's amongst the committee members.
It's amongst.
Able to make it. Mr. Lawrence just here this evening.
It's the.
It's on a calendar date.
Okay, so it's between one, myself, Mather and Jim. We need to pick a date.
Thanks for your flexibility.
How about, how about last night? Gwen, any particular days?
Are we thinking evenings are better for everybody? Or or is day, are daytimes a possibility?
Mather?
I can, I can make days work.
Looking, looking eight thirty.
Sure.
You're good, I'm good with eight thirties.
Is morning today be okay for me, Jim?
Um, let's see. He definitely knows who's visiting. Look at his calendar. Uh, Thursday the fifteenth.
Uh, that's.
That's next week.
Um.
Is it next week? It's next week.
Yeah, that, I, I'm not sure about that. I might have, I might have a phone call.
Wednesday the fourteenth.
Yep, that works for me.
Yeah. Fourteenth, I know it is. We'll bring a candle and cupcake.
Yeah, I can do that.
Jim, the fourteenth, eight thirty?
And I, I've had in my files of information about prior work that's been done on facility studies going back to nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
So I thought it would be very helpful if everybody could have this material before that meeting. Uh, so there's, there's just a lot of history to this and um, I think the background would be helpful. So do you think that somebody in
Absolutely.
The town hall could make copies of this?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And I'll tell you who care of that.
Well, I even put my name on it.
Okay, and it'd be email.
It ha, it would all have to be scanned.
Yeah, we, we probably, it's not that big.
Make it to a PDF.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We can do both. We can scan it, yeah, make better copies. Nobody can handle it.
Yeah, Jim, would you get, either way, so you, you're going to do both? You're going to, okay.
Did you make a note for Kathy?
And where is the V A here?
I maybe make a note. Okay. Yes, is it, is the space, well, we usually, well, yeah, I'll actually think of. But that's not here. No. There's nothing listed. Okay. Correspondents. Number five.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I meant to ask this. Um, oh, no, I guess we can talk about it when we get to the committee meeting. No, I can hold on to that.
Um, so, correspondents, we have from Rob Harley in support of the trail access, which was discussed with the Bolton, that bike walk of Bolton. Uh, they're, they're, they run a trail that goes from the bike walk trail on Bolton side of, of the Bolton side. Look, side is down the side of the tunnel that creeps up and lands on Cook Street somewhere, which there's already a path. And uh, so from Bolton Conservation Commission, the Bolton supports any safe remedy for the residents in the Bolton Lakes area to access the Hopperer Trail in East Coast Greenway. We feel that an open connection will help restore and guide safe movement for bicycles, pedestrians, traffic between the notch and various parts of town. We further encourage the study to qualified professionals to determine and resolve satisfactory access and safety concerns for the residents of Bolton and towns to our east. Respectfully, Bolton Conservation Committee, Rob Harley.
And Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, this was not about the, the access and cook drive. This is about along Route forty-four and connecting the East Coast Greenway and possibly, possibly the trail.
My mistake. I think that's fair.
It was three eighty-four.
Right, yeah.
Massive.
Yeah. Uh, and then five, B. Uh, there's an email and Tom Manning would like for selecting members to attend a planning and zoning meeting. Uh, they have some time on their hands and they'd like us to give them some input on uh, some of the zoning rules that we'd like to have changed, which would particularly pertain to the potential water going up Route forty-four and attracting different businesses up there that are not allowed at the moment. So anybody can make that meaning?
So that's what, that's what they are asking us to do is to give, please comment on the current regulations and what, which ones we feel should be changed.
Oh, well, yeah, I don't think we'd be able to dig that deep and figure that out, but with the help of staff, I think we'll have more input or more knowledge of what the rules are, the regulations are.
This started with a conversation between Patrice and I uh, with regard to some of the goals that this board talked about at your retreat meeting, and she brought it back to Chairman Manning and, you know, we, and so based on that, um, there's been a conversation that has been a little bit ongoing. And you've been invited to go to their meeting. They're at a point in time that they don't have a tremendous amount going on. And they are working on regulations, so they felt it would be timely um, for this, this board of selectmen to have a conversation with their commission so that they can potentially start working on some of the things that you all have identified that may be somewhat roadblocks to, you know, current and future development.
And some of the discussions we discussed at retreat, it does, I mean, it's a good, good opportunity to share with them and an open discussion.
So I think what my, what I envision in my conversation with Patrice would be, you know, is, is to kind of have a high level discussion with them that you had at your retreat meeting. But then it would really be up to the Planning and Zoning Commission with their staff, you know, to get into the weeds with the regulations themselves.
Okay.
I think if you can impress upon the Planning and Zoning Commission what your vision as a, as a board of selectmen is, I think they can help you move that ball forward.
Okay, alright, yep, thank you.
It's a two board, two board meeting. It'll be their meeting, so they, they run the show, so. Um, is there any other comments?
We could have all this.
Bye, goodnight, thank you.
Other's comment from the town, I think that's a great idea. Hope they open it up.
Um, alright, so let's move on to number six, which is the ALF on approval of meetings. On approval of meetings.
I think a motion that we approve the July second minutes, uh, as presented.
You find it.
I will second it. I will slow here.
Any discussion on the July second meeting? Minutes. Yes.
No change to the minutes, but only just noticing that. A woman at the meeting asked about the having taxes twice a year. And you had said you put it on this agenda. For discussion and it's not on the agenda for discussion, so we just need to. Make a note that we should be putting that on a future agenda for discussion. Lauren. Valance that, yes.
We can do that as a consensus after.
Uh, any other questions on that? On the meetings of July second. All in favor?
Abstained, abstained.
Okay, so we got five yes and two abstained, one and ten.
Pam, are you abstaining too? But you're listed as absent. If we're talking about July, July two.
Oh, I apologize.
Nope, so. We need somebody else to make the motion?
Yeah, me.
Okay, the motion was made by Bob. Uh, so now we have. Four. Yes, and three abstained, ten, one, and Pam. Yes.
Do I, I think the motion that we approved the special joint committee meeting, which I wasn't sending.
One second.
The. July eighth meeting. Yeah, well, you were.
Clear.
Yeah. Yeah, you are. Is there a second?
Yes, there was.
Okay. Now they're seconded that, and is there any questions? Uh, all in favor? Aye, aye, that's seven, yes, zero, no. Moving on to. July ninth. I need a motion.
Um, I'm moving to option of the minutes of the July ninth. Special meeting.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Abstained, can sell the abstains.
I'm sorry, abstained.
So it's five yes and two abstained. Now we move on to the July sixteenth meeting.
Chairman, that's as mad hot. That's just would be advisory.
Okay.
Because we didn't have a forum like board members there.
All right.
It's just advisory.
And now we move on to July sixteenth special meeting.
But can I?
Yes.
Oh, where was it?
I have a comment on the first. Meeting.
Yeah, uh, three. Okay, now page two. Number three A. It says administration seems to like this issue best. It should say option.
Like this. Action.
Yes, yeah, that was the presentation of the.
With the consensus, um, I move on then. Uh, make a motion for me.
I will accept the motion for the July sixteen.
But I, I know that we accepted the minutes for the special eighteen.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion on paper. That's seven, yes. Zero, no. Uh, then we move on to reports and updates.
For the A for. For two year. Forty-four. Right, Amanda? Yeah, you don't have to approve this. You know why, you, you don't want to accept them.
It's, it's still changing.
And by the way, thank you for. Except my ball.
I can't take credit for that. I don't know who did it, but I can't take.
That's great, and having that little print in the corner, this is. Any other comments on the? Budgets.
I also like the bold.
Okay.
The only comment I'll make is that as of right now, it looks like we had. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand, about five hundred left at the end of the year, obviously knowing there's still some expenses coming in. We did not budget. For any carryover from the board of selectmen in this year's budget, so that's potential additional revenue once it's audited and we have the final numbers for next year's.
Of course.
Um, next. A B, here we pour on Nathan Hill, potential parking sites.
I, I don't have anything. I was wondering, I have not heard a thing from Kathy as to whether any of the people who received the letter. Was, made any responses.
Far as I know, we've gotten zero responses.
Okay, that's good.
That's a good thing.
I received one from.
Okay, what, was it positive, negative, neutral?
Pretty neutral.
Okay. You're sounding pretty.
Well, they brought up pros and cons. They were interested in why the others were rejected and they thought it would have been better to be down at Route six. But they didn't, weren't vehemently opposed, but they were concerned about. Um, supervision of the. Parking lot because it is not on a main road. Uh, overnight. Drugs or vandalism or something.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good then. One, one response out of, I don't know, we sent, town sent twenty-five, thirty letters, something like that. Yeah, yeah, so, uh, when do you think that the work could? Be started?
We have to vote, right?
Well, yeah, I guess we do need to authorize that, that B. I mean, I would, I would think that if there's. With no negative comments. That the board would want to authorize this work to be done.
When is the work that you described, the engineering work, or is that already been done?
There's no, has not been any engineering work. I don't even know if there has to be.
We, we don't even need the grant at this point, or?
Correct.
Great.
I mean, I, in my opinion, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't be the, you know, I don't, I don't have the professional knowledge to know what's going to go into it, but it seems like something that our town.
Right now, we probably should get. Somebody to go out there. Just. So, but I'll decide what we need to clear, what it's gonna take, kind of figure out our man hours and. So. We have a new highway supervisor starting. On August twelve. We need to get Rocko Road down.
That's first.
That, that is the first thing on his agenda as a highway supervisor. Um, but. In, in between, we can start looking at it. And potentially, you know, in times when we have. Space and time available, we can, you know, start working on some. Some things I would love for you and the committee. You know, to meet with him after he gets here and gets acclimated and meet out there on the site. And share your vision with him. Um, those who were on the. Selection panel for highway foreman, I think. Would tell you that. We haven't seen his practical work, but on paper. And in his interview, he, he appears to be very well suited and very well qualified. For that kind of work.
Good, okay, so, um. How much time should? The committee give him before we ask him for that meeting?
I, I would love to let him get acclimated through the week, next week, and then shortly, you know, right after that, I think we could. You know, in, in his second week here, I think that would be perfect for you to be able to meet with him out there on site. And, you know, talk to them about it.
Okay, so, um, could you provide me with his contact information?
Sure.
Okay, and then, um, I'd like to make a motion that this board authorize the creation of a parking area. For, to access the Nathan Hill corridor on. The south side of Stony Road.
I would second that motion.
I will be closing.
Any discussion? Yes.
Uh, I don't think we have a, a cost of time as, but we haven't had it reviewed. Gone through by our new town foreman. Um, and we haven't posted that we would be making a motion to do this. So the other met people on South Road do not, are not aware that we'd be making this action tonight. It's, I think. Or too, too early to make the motion.
I think we can begin the process, with, with all due respect, I know where you want to go. But not hold it up, but I think this. Given investigating, getting our cost and all that together, we need to get that done. And have this thing posted at our September. Yeah, September meeting. And, and. We've had enough. Questions of people thinking and finding pushing this through, and I think. I, I think it's a great location. I'm, I'm not, I, I, I'm frank, I am not. Posted it off, I think this is just a better way to do it, and, and we owe, we owe that to the residents in that area.
We had quite a few in opposition to the other one, and I think it's just fair that they know that this is. In the offing and they weren't part of the twenty-five that were.
No, they did. They got those letters.
Be a budding.
I can give you the list of the, of people that, yeah. I'll, I'll send that to you. They did, they did get the letters.
And they, they, all of the letters that went out. Were sent. Not certified, but with a mailing receipt requested. Because it was much less expensive than certified mail, so we can prove that they were.
That's, that's excellent.
We, we did that purposely.
Yeah, I just think it'd be fit, be.
Yes, this, this, yeah, smaller deal is, I think it's a big deal that we're actually finally doing this. It's an important thing. And we want to make sure we do it right, and we do want to post it on a meeting.
Yeah, okay, always.
So September third, September third meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that's the right date. Thanks, I think it's early.
This third. This is the first Tuesday, right? The first Tuesday, not the third.
Uh, now we. Any other? Comments, so moving on to. Yep.
We have, um, two other pieces of correspondence that came to us that were not. Looked it on the agenda. And I just wanted to recognize that we received them.
Those, those are part of your meeting minutes.
Actually, they weren't listed that, it's, they were listed under number five, which is correspondence.
Well, one was received August five and one was received August.
Okay.
Second, so I just, uh, one was from, uh, Denise. Dylanell and the other was from Connie. And it's not for discussion, but just to recognize that we did receive more person.
Thank you, Pam.
And but. And Jim Swatis. Administration report, I'd like to say a special thank you to our board clerk who tries to keep up with us in these meetings and she does a fabulous job.
Thank you, Wanda.
Yeah.
Okay, now we move on to. Eight. Eight C. Our town administrators report.
Before we do that, which won't take very long, I don't think. I would like the board to consider adding on a, on an item to the agenda. Because this is a regular meeting, we got a communication today. From the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. That would allow us to. If the board still chooses to sign up for a speed enforcement grant. Which would be the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and this is particularly for rural roads. And would run through June twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we open the agenda to include this. Uh, information under eight.
B two.
And we'll do it after the administrator's report.
Eight D, this.
And so Jim can do his report and I'll come back to it.
Zero second to the motion. Yeah, she's got. Amanda, second, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Motion pass, seven. Yeah, yes.
So. I apologize because I was away and we got your agenda underway. Early and I just returned about two AM this morning, so. We have a, a verbal report for today, but it was a pretty busy month. One of the things that. Um, we, the, the board of selectmen as a whole. For years has actually been working on is improving the, um. Fire suppression order in town. And I'm happy to tell you that, uh. Some of the funds that you have set aside over the years. Were spent recently to install a dry hydrant. At a new pond at Country Carpenters, which is one of our key areas that we've identified. In needing, um. Fire protection water. That, for those who aren't familiar, because this goes back several years. It was actually a committee that was put together that identified, I think it was thirteen locations. That really were in need of firefighting water in our rural community, and this was one of those. Key locations because it is, um. Near West Street at the intersection of Loomis. So that, it gives me great pleasure to report that that dry hydrant is in, it's been tested. And it works quite well. And it is estimated that it provides about. Access to about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. Which is very significant.
Is that a Loomis Street access?
One of the nice things about the Country Carpenter's location is it's a drive-through. They have a driveway where the gate that goes from Loomis. All the way out to West Street, so the fire apparatus for needing water, they could drive in one way and out the other way.
Okay.
Um, and. Uh, the, the family, the, the very family that owns Country Carpenters has provided. Um, Bolton Fire Department did. Access to those gates from the. That's, that's.
Pond is on the back corner of this.
Yeah, it's right, if, if you're familiar, it's right, sort of right behind Cassiers.
Okay.
Uh, not, not too far from the street.
Okay.
And what funding was used for this?
So we actually have a water supply line item in our capital budget.
Okay.
This was, this was, the pieces parts only costs around three thousand dollars, so it's, there's still a fair bit of money in that. Capital account, but, but it's, uh. It's one more place that we've got operation, which I. I think it's great.
Did, did they have to build the pond or?
They built the pond.
I don't remember if they're building pond there.
Well, they built, they built the pond, they went through the Wetlands, uh, commission and got permission, it was overseen by the Wetlands Commission. Um. And I, I actually drove through there to take a look at it just before I. Went to California and it actually got grass growing around the edges of the pond already, so they've. Really done well, it's, uh. And it's, it's great that they were willing to do that and, you know, make access. You know, to the fire department for the greater good of the community. We received the notice of grant award for the pool grant that. You authorized us to apply for, and that is not for swimming pool. It was a pool of money. Uh, that was available from the Department of Homeland Security to make the upgrades that we talked about here. In the Emergency Operations Center. I also got notice of grant award yesterday from. Uh, this is around fifteen thousand dollars in ARCA funding specifically for the senior center, and to support senior center, um. Goals. And. We talked already about. And we talked already about onboarding the new highway forming, the process has already begun. Much of his paperwork is already done. I participated in, his name is A.J. Golden. And he will start work on the.
And will he have access to the vehicle the same way Sean had access to the vehicle?
We'll have that discussion after the six-month probationary period. I participated in the Eastern Highlands Health, Health District Strategic Planning Meeting. One of the other things that's happening is, uh, I've had a discussion with Arlene Fiano about potential planning for an event at the farm on the two, for the two hundred and fiftieth. And one of the things that this board really should be thinking about is forming a committee for that two hundred and fiftieth celebration of our nation's, and that, you know, that has really become statewide already. Uh, so that's something that we should be thinking about and, you know, thinking about how we want to participate in that celebration. And I think there's going to be some statewide things, there's going to be some local things. And I think we're, you know, part of that committee's job would be to understand what's happening around the state and what we can do as a community and how that will tie in with the overall picture. Participated in a crowd policy board meeting, uh, Patrice and I met with Capital Region Council Governments uh, regarding the six, three eighty-four and forty-four intersection. We've asked them to have conversations with Connecticut DOT and see if there has been a change in their perception about how we might be able to deal with that intersection. And we actually had another meeting today with somebody who has recently joined the crowd team from DOT and answered a bunch of questions, and he may, he's working on some other ideas that may come forward for discussion with the board at some point. Uh, the work with the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority continues. We're still looking at ways to help take organics out of the waste stream, which will reduce the waste stream significantly. We've been working on finalizing the union contract with the supervisors. Um, we agreed to all of the things that you all voted on, um, but we're just finalizing the language of the contract. The other thing that we do every year, and I don't know who is familiar, who may not be familiar, is we work with the Connecticut, uh, deep in order to get the lake drawdown happening every year, and that actually happens this time of year is when we work on that. And that draws the lake down about eighteen inches, so that the freeze can help kill some of the invasive weed species that grow along the edges and shallow areas of, of lower vault and lake. You had authorized us to work on a cybersecurity grant application. That grant application was completed. It was put in on time, and if we, that grant application would provide some reimbursement for some of the things that we've already done to enhance cybersecurity and would help give us some additional funding to continue to move our initiative, initiatives forward. I don't remember the exact number, but that number, uh, is somewhere in the mid nineties, ninety thousands. Um, we've been working with the Bolton Prevention Council, spending their S O R grant. Uh, and that is things that had happened in order to promote, um, the activities that the Bolton Prevention Council has been doing. They're, they're actually quite active in our community. We did hire also a new cemetery maintenance person, and we've gotten some really good feedback from the community about the performance of that individual. And we've hired, I believe, two new library pages. And that's, uh, the summary of our activities of the last month. Any questions? Is, is, and we could have put a lot more on here, but these are really just, just the highlights that, you know, we thought you would all be very interested in to know.
Good question. Uh, what's the status of the RFPs for the hazmat analysis and the remediation over at Natro?
So they were, so, so Ty and Bond, we went, they, I had a meeting with Ty and Bond after a review of the contract with the town attorney and with Kerma. Based on the comments from the town attorney and Kerma, they are supposed to have a new contract ready for me based on those comments in our meeting last week. I was, I thought I would see that today when I came here and I don't have it yet. So they are on my list for tomorrow to contact. I really want to get that moving along.
Is that just for the analysis?
That's for the analysis.
Just for the analysis.
So once the, once that's done, they, they, they've indicated that they'll be able to get the other pieces of it done pretty quickly.
So how, uh, what, what's the, what's the timeframe for getting the analysis done? And then, because we're going to then have to get into the remediation of that.
Right, so I, I, I think they told us about three weeks. They, they could probably get most of it wrapped up.
Okay, and then, oh, then, then you cannot, are you going to do the RFP for the remediation, like right, right time it so that as soon as you get the?
They're supposed, they're supposed to help us with that. That's part of their contract. Yeah, yes, absolutely. We're just going to, we're just going to move forward. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, and then, then, so we're looking at, so say three more weeks before the, we get the results back. And then what do you, what do you propose, what do you think would happen for, how long do you think the remediation itself would take?
I suspect, I suspect that that's probably going to take at a minimum of sixty days, but probably a maximum of ninety.
Okay, so we're, we're like talking about November, October, November, and then we need to do an RFP for the demolition.
I don't think there's any reason we can't do both at the same time.
RFPs.
Yeah, even though you don't, even without knowing what the hazardous material, materials are, you could do, you could do.
Yeah, I don't, well, we'll know what the hazardous materials are, but I think to Gwen's point, we know, we won't know what the remediation is like.
Yes.
We can still go up for the RFP, you know, we'll just put that line in there that says that, you know, we can reject any and all this.
Okay, all right, so we're really looking at the end of the year before demolition is even going to start, it sounds like.
It would be toward the end of the year.
Okay, and is it, has it been determined yet whether that those ARPA funds can, are, are secured as long as we have a contract?
Yes, both Amanda and I confirm that.
Okay, okay. Contract signed by December thirty-one of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're, we're not where we wanted to be, but we're still on track.
Okay. And, um, there's another, oh, just looking back on the minutes, I was looking at the minutes of the, of the July ninth meeting and one of the things, one of the next steps that was going to happen, uh, Rodney, we're going to reach out to the BOE chair to find out his availability to participate in a joint meeting with the BOS and Finance Committee to set up a meeting to discuss the future of the schools.
Okay, I had that mission, didn't I?
Okay. Just checking.
Thank you.
And then, um, and then Bob, you were going to talk with the Vernon mayor about what they dealt, did with Cubel's Row. Did you have a chance to do that?
As a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago. Can I share that now or?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would.
I can make it part of my report.
And make it part of your report. Add it to the what? Yes.
So I, I can tell you, because Bob told me it after he hit the phone call, and then he can found that. Um, so that he did talk with the mayor and they didn't take over any of the roads, they just paved it.
Okay. And they, and they utilize, their reasoning is for safety and, uh, because those roads were actually used, some of them are actually used for school busing as well.
Okay.
Have they been inundated with private road paving requests?
No, that was it. They did, they paved them all. They did them all. That whole area, that's the only place they had them was there, so they did the whole thing, um, and, and there's a huge number of homes in there that are impacted by, and more on their.
More on their side.
Oh, oh, yeah, their side, yeah, and also, you know, but those streets are through street, and those, I mean, you, you go through, Bolton, you go through there, you end up over on Hatch Hill Road on the other side. Going through there, the different situation in most of in all of our private roads, ours are dead end roads. Uh, and on the lake, they're, they're, they're even, they're dirt and cow pat, and they maybe have one or two homes on it.
But the, the, the only one that has more is Colonial. The rest only have one or two.
Roads.
And that's it.
And we have, sorry, and the only, and the only, yeah, none of them were, were through streets at all. The only one is this little strip that we're talking about as a two street.
Okay.
You added that in for the agenda.
All right, so, yeah, yes.
Are we ready to move on to D?
Or eight D, please.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the emergency management grant for the amount that Jim referred to about.
It's not an emergency management grant.
Mr. Chairman, this time I make a motion that we accept the.
Let's see.
We get it, if we sign it and date it. So it. Do we accept the grant for the rural road speed enforcement?
We don't have to apply for it?
No, no. Fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and the second part of the motion would say in the amount of fifty thousand.
And I'll second that with a comment. Speeding has become even a worse issue than it had been in prior, prior to COVID. Since then, when you talk to any of the enforcement officers, it's, it's, I mean, I don't understand why or what it is, but, and now utilizing these funds, you're also speeding and also the other issue of, of distracted drivers. That's, I think, with these funds, hopefully we can, we can have some positive impact on, on this thing, because you're, you're, we, I get it, anybody out here must get trauma from people. They're all going too fast. What can you do? It's kind of like, you know, well, here's some funds that'll help. And hopefully nail the people doing it. Many times they're, they live on the same street, but it's a lesson well learned.
Don't get scared. Don't get scared.
Did you have a pen? Did you forget?
No. I would just like to say that, uh, this is not new. This is something that comes, uh, out of federal money that comes to the state. The state decides how they're going to divide it up and, um, there's, this is not the first time we've received this type of grant, so it's usually pretty beneficial because people begin to see and they don't know that this is coming about, and the startle effect or the awareness effect, I think can be very dramatic. Particularly, I would like to then, um, when we have, uh, a discussion with our resident state troopers to ask Jim to please pass along, I would like to see some of this money used for Saturday night, eleven, twelve o'clock at the end of three eighty-four, because it's used as a Speedway and I've gotten caught twice in it. And it's very unpleasant as it's used for drag strip and they come down to exit bike and turn. So.
So is this for, is this for state police additional initial time for them to do?
Yes.
Yeah.
Putting speed bumps or do other stuff.
This is enforcement.
Police.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Just one question, it has to be fully spent by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Hi, seven yes, zero opposed, motion passed.
I'll move your turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Scheduling.